Madam Chair, properly moved and supported. Any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Close nay, motion carried. The next item on the agenda is approval of minutes of February 16th, 2022. What is the will of the board?
Madam Chair, I move approval.
Moved by Commissioner Davis.
Report.
Seconded by, what's your name?
Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Commissioner Coleman. I get name black, I don't know what happens when I sit in this chair. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Close nay, motion carried. The next item on the agenda is public comment. Are we going to have a stated purpose, a stated comment, information on the public comment before we start?
Madam Chair, I can do that if you like.
I would appreciate it, thank you very much.
Very well. To make a comment, if you are in person, please sign the sign-in sheet that is in the front of the room. Your name will be called by the chair and then you can proceed to the microphone. Please make sure to keep your mask on at all times. If you are online, please raise your hand so that we can acknowledge that you would like to make a comment. You can use, you can raise your hand by using the raise hand icon on your desktop or mobile device. If you are calling into the meeting, press star nine to raise your hand. If you are online or on the phone, I believe Nikia Branch will be calling your name. IT will give you permission to unmute. In order to begin speaking, you will have to unmute yourself. To do so, press the unmute button, which is the microphone icon if you're online, or star six if you are calling in. As a reminder, you have a limit of three minutes to make your comment. There will be a timer indicating your remaining time. And if you're online and you make a comment, we kindly request that you fill out the comment card that's located in the chat. By filling out this card, you do not have to give your personal information on the air. We will get your contact information to follow up appropriately. If you are unable to click the link, please let us know and a phone number will be provided for you. You will only be called upon once, and once public comment closes, there will be no other comments from the public, and all attendees will remain muted for the duration of the meeting. On-site comments will go first if we have any, followed by online and on the phone. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. So I do have a list of people who have requested to address the board. The first one I have is Michael Shane. Mr. Shane, would you please come forward?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon and welcome.
I'm only giving you...
Okay.
...a preliminary analysis of 31 lead test results at my son's house who lives across the street from me. These are concerning because out of the 31 tests, six have come out above the EPA action level for lead. I had the test done at Paragon Laboratories, which is a certified laboratory in Livonia, Michigan. I've communicated, or been in communication with Mr. David Fielder for the last six or eight months. He's aware of the findings. Now, I'd like more than three minutes, but I'll rush through this if I have to. We became concerned in June of, or July of 2020 because sediment started showing up in large amounts in our neighborhood in the water supply. My son asked GLEWA to test the water for corrosives, including chemical contamination. GLEWA initially refused to give him the results. When we finally got him back, it was clear that they only tested the water for turbidity and opacity. No chemical testing was done, we were suspicious. So when my, I'm part of the test matrix for DWSD. Third year, first time ever, lead showed up in my house. My son joined the program, even higher lead levels showed up in the DWSD testing. So I did, we started by trying to figure out what was going on. And my memo describes the logic in what we did. But at one point, I did first, fifth, seventh, ninth, 11th, and 13th liter tests, expecting that I should be able to estimate the length of the lead line. It never went to zero. Then we started doing other tests in December of this year. Zero minutes, one liter. Let it flow vigorously for two, four, six, eight, and 10 minutes. One of those tests came out at 66 parts per billion for lead. This is unacceptable. You are doing something in my neighborhood that damaged the water. Now, Mr. Fielder acknowledged that there's, he and I know there's a lot of construction going on around water in my neighborhood. And the vibration from the trucks can dislodge lead particles into the house. Now, you'll probably ask, which faucet did I use? It's a faucet that was installed in 2016. It complies with the latest restrictions on lead content in the faucet. There is no screen, we use the laundry sink in the basement, which is closest to the water meter. We need action now. We want our lead lines on our street and the next street over removed immediately because you've done something to change the chemistry of the water flowing into our homes. I live across the street. My house does not show the same high levels, although there are levels that we never used to see before. The reports from DWSD used to be either ND or zero, less than .01, meaning it was undetectable. I know you've changed the testing in the last year, so I think you have, but doesn't matter. These are standard tests, they're straightforward to do. Something is going on. Now, I would like to get an answer from the board on what is going on. I want an explanation. Mr. Fielder doesn't know what's going on. I don't blame him. This is very confusing. I have a scientific background, not in water, not in chemistry, but I'm logical. And these test sequences I did were in effort to understand what's going on. Not only do we get lead, but it's highly variable over time. So you need to do something about this. My granddaughter lives across the street, and we are now shipping in five-gallon bottles of water so that she doesn't get permanently damaged.
Mr. Shane?
Yes?
I certainly understand your level of concern, so do not think we're taking this very lightly. We are taking this very seriously, and I'm going to ask the director to respond to you at this time.
Madam Chair, it's frankly the first time that I'm hearing about this particular incident, and I would just ask if you would give us a week to allow me to dig into it. As you know, the Great Lakes Water Authority chemists are who we utilize to do our testing, and certainly we need to understand more about the protocol and how the samples were taken and what else is going on in the neighborhood. So we'll need at least a week, and by the next board meeting, we'll come back to you with a report on what's going on at his house and the other houses on the block.
Mr. Shane, we will be back in touch with you very shortly.
I thank you, and I appreciate the cooperation from Mr. Fielder. He's been excellent to work with.
Thank you very much for that.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner?
May I ask, where's his neighborhood?
We've got his address, we're not supposed to, we're not revealing. The neighborhood is all you want?
That's all.
Go ahead.
On Patch Street between Red River and McNichols, we're about walking distance from the new Myers.
Thank you.
And there's water pipe replacements going over here for my house, and lots of sewer line replacements going on, and many instances where the water gets cut off in my neighborhood, and the fire hangers get turned on without notice, by the way.
Thank you, we'll certainly be getting back to you very shortly, sir. You certainly expressed concerns that we share, so thank you. The next person I have is Alina Hen, I can't read, Hendrikger? Alina, would you come and tell us your last name? I'm not reading it very clearly. Oh, Alina.
Hello, Telena Herrera.
Herrera.
H-E-R-R-A-D-A.
Herrera, okay, thank you.
There are many Herrera's and few Hereras.
Okay, thank you, dear.
Thank you, and thank you for allowing me to speak. I'll be very brief. I want to thank DWSD for looking into the problems that I have raised and brought in with two particular families. One of them is Maine Johnson, Maine who's here with me today, and another is another family who bought a home that had been flipped through the criminal land bank. And the land bank did not allow either of the families to know that there was no capacity for water. These two people that I'm referring to, I'm just one person, a regular person, I'm nobody in the grassroots of Detroit, and two people brought this to my attention within two weeks. So it has to be a much more widespread problem than what I'm, that I personally encountered and was able to bring here to you and to be able to communicate with Maine because he was my student, and the other family because I just stumbled upon them and they speak Spanish only. The reason I'm raising this is because I know that there are many people who bought houses in good faith through the land bank, thinking that they would be able to live in those houses. And if you bought a house for $2,000 or $3,000, you sure were not prepared to spend $10,000 to make sure that it could have water. This is an abomination to the citizens of Detroit, and speculators and land bank, they have got to be called to account. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Is the address you provided the address of a customer with the problem? Or is this, this is your address? If you, if you would be so kind as to make sure that we have the address of the party in question? Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Director.
I know that the board knows this, but we're doing everything that we can to work with the land bank, to help the land bank resolve this issue. We know that there are several hundred people that have bought homes from the land bank without the proper notice with regards to the service lines being cut. And as you know, we have secured a million dollars to procure a contract that the land bank will have access to, to help solve these problems. And in very short order, that contract will be put in place. We're, the, we've accepted the bids. We're going to pick one of the vendors, put the contract in place, bring it to this board, and then it will be available to the land bank to fix the problem that's been created by selling homes to unwitting residents with regards to the lines being cut.
So just to clarify, oh, Commissioner Davis.
Madam Chair, my recollection is that Commissioner Kinlaw requested a special meeting, did he not? Or?
We were supposed to have a special meeting with the land bank.
Okay.
And for the last three meetings, they have agreed to come in front of this body, including today, and at the last minute, weren't able to make it. We will continue to pursue the new director of the land bank. I know that she was in front of city council today on her budget hearing because she came after I was there online, and I expressed to her how important it was for her to come in front of this body and explain the program that she's putting in place to resolve the issues because this is truly not a DWSD issue. But the people that are affected by that, it shouldn't matter very much whether it's a DWSD issue, it's a city issue, and we need to resolve it. And unfortunately, DWSD does not know who these people are unless they are bought to our attention. But the land bank knows who they sold houses to. And so they can go through the list of homes that have been sold over the last five years, or at least over the period of time that they weren't notifying. It's my understanding when you buy a home from the land bank today, you sign a document that indicates that they don't know whether the line is intact or not. At least the buyer is made aware. But we don't have the information here. And until someone comes in front of, usually this board or comes to my attention, we don't know who they are. And so we're asking the land bank to contact everyone that they've sold a house to that could have not had a lead service line. I can tell you that the, there were two people that came to our attention at the last board meeting. I believe Mrs. Meeks and one other, and we've resolved those two issues with making the repair.
Well, Director Brown, you, I know you've been trying hard to get it done, and you're right, it's not a DWSD problem. But we know there's one sure way to persuade the director to appear.
Excuse me, Mr. Smith?
Yes, we do. Commissioner Garcia?
Yeah, I, you know, issue is that we've been bringing this up for a while, we've been very patient. And you know, the customers out there, they don't know that it's, you know, they don't know who to blame other than the water department. They don't, can't go to the meetings with the land banks. So I think there's got to be a way legally that we can ask them to come and answer some of these questions. And I think they're being disrespectful when they do not show up and respond to us. That's what I think.
Mr. Madam Chair?
Mr. Commissioner Kinlaw, I see you. Director Brown?
Before this...
Okay, Commissioner Kinlaw.
Thank you. Madam Chair, without objection, I move to waive the rules and to make the following motion. The motion is, is that be it resolved that the Detroit Board of Water Commissioners request for the director of the land bank to appear before the, at its next, next practical meeting to answer questions, to answer questions regarding its operations.
Madam Chair, I support that.
Properly moved and supported, discussion.
Madam Chair?
Yes, yes, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, Madam Chair, a friendly amendment to, if it's accepted by the maker of the motion, and that's some language in there, that we are willing to schedule a special meeting to accommodate the availability of the director.
Support.
The amendment has been offered, and there's a support to the amendment. The maker of the motion accepted as a friendly amendment?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
Okay, Commissioner Forte?
Yes, and I do support the motion and the amendment. Here's my question, though, because it's just going to go on our books and in our minutes as a resolution. So to me, that has very little teeth. And so I'm wondering if we can, I don't know, who does the land bank report to?
Madam Chair, one, just to build on that, that my intent to the motion is that this resolution be sent by the secretary and, I mean, the director, to the director, the person, and if they don't respond, then that next step will be going to the mayor. Yep.
And that's, I think, my point. That is exactly my point, because otherwise, is this a resolution? So it's in our minutes and has no teeth.
It's going to go to it, but and then if not, then I...
Need further direction on that, Mr. Director, or is that sufficient?
We'll have that resolution delivered tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Coleman?
Question. Just curious, it's on the same subject. Are we getting any complaints on the gas line and that hookup? Seems like it's just water line, but I mean, I'm thinking if they, they're ripping out stuff. I mean, it's just, you got a bore line to put a gas line in too, right?
Yeah, what, what hap, yeah, what happened was, most of these homes were on the demolition list. And the land bank, before they demo the house, they have a contractor that cuts the water, water to the house that's going to be demoed. So the city council approved these homes to be demoed. The land bank ordered that the lines be cut. And then there was a change of direction in which the houses would be sold. And that's where the problem is.
But I'm curious, did they cut the gas lines off?
DTE, did they disconnect the electricity and the gas?
Yeah, I don't have the answer. They would, I know if it's the same scenario that I just painted, they would have had to have disconnected.
Done that beforehand.
I just don't, I don't think it's as difficult to reattach the, the gas mains as it is, the water line.
I mean, electric's pretty easy.
First of all, there, our lines have to be, you know, down at basement level, 10, 12 feet below ground level. DTE's gas mains are waist-high, three feet. And so they're much easier to reconnect. One person can reconnect the gas line in less than two hours.
Okay, I was just curious, thank you.
You're very welcome. Any further discussion on the item? And on the amended, the motion as amended? All those in favor, please indicate by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Close nay, motion carried. And we do expect to have this expeditiously handled.
Be taken care of tomorrow, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir. The next person we have is, and I'm not seeing his first name, is it Jermaine Paines? Jermaine Paines, would you please come forward, please, and welcome?
Good afternoon, Commissioners and...
Good afternoon.
Director Gary Brown. I'm a resident of the city of Detroit. I bought a house from the land bank in 2020. It's been almost two years, I've been waiting on water to start my progress on rebuilding my house. I cannot stay in the house because there's no water running. I did, you did make a promise to me last month, Gary Brown, when I came to the meeting, that you were going to go after the land bank, and the land bank was going to be here at these meetings. I think it's quite disrespectful to me and all the people that bought land bank houses that they're not here to answer our questions. You guys are not the land bank. You guys are the water board commissioners, Wayne County Commissioners, and director of the board. So I don't understand how you guys can responsibly, accountability, credibility, give us the information we need to why did the land bank do this to thousands of residents of this city and then try to run away from our problems? You guys didn't tear up water lines, you guys didn't tear up our gas lines, you guys didn't tell us that we're going to be demoing the house. And a lot of these houses, they were on the demolition list, the land bank criminally covered it up. My house was on a demolition list when I called the land bank, they tell me it wasn't. So there is, I think that the land bank needs to be held accountable. I'm tired of excuses. I'm going to come to every meeting until I hear from one of the director from the land bank. Unfortunately, I know they just had a director resign. That's no excuse. It wasn't an excuse when they took my money. It wasn't an excuse when I had to fight and call them day after day, sleepless nights, stress, depress, and everything else about this water line situation. I've been on the phone with all types of directors at the water board. I've been on the phone with all types of supervisors and maintenance staff and people trying to help me figure out why I don't have water. I'm tired of hearing that. I hear people saying, were we trying to help? No, because I know well that people in this city who have gotten water, who have gotten a resolution right away, I don't want to hear it's going to take time. I got a family, I work every day, I'm a hard worker, and I'm not giving up. If we got to go to the mayor's office and get the mayor to react, that's what we need to do, Gary Brown. Now, stop making excuses for the land bank. I'm tired of hearing the land bank say, oh, they had, the director had a meeting. She didn't have a meeting last month when we were asking about these problems, or this month. This is the second time I've been came to a meeting and the land bank haven't been here. That's unacceptable, and I'm tired of it. I'm tired of it, just like all these other residents and citizens of this city who pay taxes in this city, who are tired of hearing that we are excusing the land bank from these meetings. We pay them. The land bank ain't nothing without the Detroit citizens. The land bank, we pay them, they work for us. We don't work for them.
Your time is up.
These commissioners work for us, not for the land bank. These commissioners and the director, Gary Brown, I'm tired of hearing, just go after them.
Mr. Payne?
Thank you.
We hear you very clearly, and you've heard that we're going to pursue this vigorously. Thank you so much. I have one more request from Pastor Williams. Pastor Williams, could we have your first name, sir?
Pastor Curtis C. Williams.
Thank you, sir. Please, proceed.
All right, I, you have to excuse me, I just got out of the hospital from a surgery on Monday. And so I'm taking this narco stuff, a little off balance, my driver drove me down, so forgive me. But 2020, on November 6th, I purchased a lot, 1801 South Ford Street. It was a dump, tires, people just stopped and put their trash on. So I purchased a lot. I've cleaned up the lot. I think there's been a misunderstanding. I'm the owner of Trinity Chapel Funeral Homes in Detroit Northwest and Southwest, and I own Stinson. And I think on last month, there was a meeting and there was a misunderstanding. Brother Brown said to you all that he gave, took $8,000 off an $11,000 bill. First of all, that was not my bill, because you cannot accumulate $11,000. And I think that was just a small misunderstanding in the way it was presented, because I was traveling on the phone. Therefore, the discovery came that I owed, and I don't mind paying, I think Brother Brown told me $233.41 a month for the impervious on the lot. I don't mind paying that. But at the discovery is what I'm concerned about. Now, if the bill was $11,000, they took off eight, that leaves a balance. My concern is the balance. Unfortunately, or fortunately, I should say, everybody knows how to reach me, but the water department did not know that I was the owner. And that's understanding, I had put in the paperwork, somehow it got lost, they didn't know I was the owner. So what I'm asking from the discovery of the balance, I'm asking for some kind of reprieve. And then I can go ahead and start paying, and I got a bill this month for $4,000. $4,092 for the lot. And what I'm asking for is some kind of agreeable adjustment on that $4,000. Brother Brown did say to me, he said, pastor, I'll look into it. And I know people got a lot of other things on their plate right now, I'm dealing with health issues. And I just want some kind of reprieve on the balance that we all can agree on, he and I. And that's where I am with that. I did pay this month's bill, that, as I said, it came to $4,000 and I think $90. I did pay the $233.41.
Your time is up.
Thank you so much.
Pastor Curtis?
Thank you so much.
You did not include a telephone number on here, but that's okay.
313-999-4211, that's my private line.
We do have, we understand that there is someone from customer service working with you on this, at a doctor, at Director Brown's office, but I see, Commissioner Kinlaw?
Yes. Yes, quick question. So, Director, because he had said that he was in touch with your, with your office in regard to resolution of this, and just wanted to know, what was your understanding as relates to the status of this issue?
My understanding is when we audited the account, there was $8,000 that was not Reverend Williams's responsibility. And so we removed that amount off of the bill.
That's true.
It was my understanding that the drainage team, Lisa Wallach's team, was going to go out and do an assessment of the property. It's my understanding that Mr. Williams put in gravel on the lot and doesn't feel that there should be any charge for drainage because it's draining through the gravel, and that we were going to do a site assessment to understand whether or not that was the case, that the property, the water was draining off the property and not going into the sewer system. If that's the case, then there would be a further adjustment made to the count. But that, I just, there's this, I'm not saying that it's happening here, but there's this misconception sometimes that I can just adjust bills and I can just flush bills. I need to have justification for doing it. And so we've removed the $8,000. This is not a piece of property that has a building on it.
Okay.
So it doesn't have a water account, it's not going to be cut off, nothing's going to be sent to the tax rolls. And so we just need the time to allow the drainage team to do the site assessment and further review before we can make any further...
That makes sense.
Well, they have done that assessment and it has been denied. And as I, I've got the paperwork here, they sent me a letter. And so I, as I said to you previously, I don't mind paying the monthly bill of $233.41. If that's what it is, that's what it is. I don't have a problem with that. What I'm asking is that at the discovery, that we make an adjec... What I'm asking is that at the discovery, that we make an adjustment. You follow me? You take eight off, there's a balance, and all of a sudden, they discover I'm the owner? I don't have a problem with that. But I have a problem with the fact is that I need to have some kind of adjustment from the discovery. And I paid $233.41 already on the $4,000 of the bill that I just got. But I want something to, an adjustment on discovery, something that we can agree on. And that's where I am with, because they've already made the denial. And I know, you know, okay, so it is what it is. I don't mind paying it. But again, please take in accountability that I live in Detroit. Matter of fact.
We live, we live, we live next door to each other.
And all my businesses are in Detroit. I passed the church for over 25 years of my 50-year ministry in Detroit. I am a real Detroiter. And so I'm just asking for some help so I can remain a Detroiter. And I appreciate you all's time. Thank you so much for the job that you all do. But that's all I'm asking. I'm asking for an adjustment on that $4,000. It's a little less than four now since I paid the bill. But I'm asking for an adjustment that we in the Water Board can agree on. And then I can make some, when we make that adjustment and we agree upon it, then I can make some payments upon that agreement to get it where it needs to be. That's all.
Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you so much. You all have a great day.
And you will be hearing from us. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I don't have any more cards or notices that anyone, is there anyone else who would like to address the board at this time under public participation?
Yes, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, Commissioners. We do have five members participating online who would like to speak.
Okay.
First up, we have Sheri Burton.
I'm sorry, I'm not hearing the name again?
Sheri Burton, B-U-R-T-O-N.
Okay.
Hi. Yes. Thank you, Director.
You're welcome. Yes.
And Commissioners for allowing me to speak. I have a question about the basement protection. Well, I have a comment about the basement backup protection program. Our area is not included. The area, the neighborhood west of us that covers our whole western border is included as well as the Neighborhood Association south of us. And we have the same impact that those neighbors had historically. So I have sent an email to the, well, whatever the Public Affairs, that email. I sent the email on February 8th to schedule a meeting with someone about the issue, and I have yet to hear from anyone. And I know our Director, Mr. Brown, stated in a Don, Department of Neighborhood meeting, not a few days after the flooding, that us residents should consider getting backflow valves and sump pumps when we got money from FEMA. So recognizing that that is the solution, I would like for our area to be included. I know the money comes from ARPA funds. There should be enough funding for that cuz there's millions and millions of dollars. But I would really like to have a meeting with someone about the issue. Thank you. And I can see my time.
And we will see to it. Did you wanna comment, Mr. Director?
Yeah, you know, she's absolutely right. These are, these are ARPA dollars. This board does not have any control over ARPA dollars. The City Council has approved the buckets in which the ARPA dollars are coming from. And this is how it works. As the board knows, I can't spend rate dollars on improving private property. So I submitted a plan to the city that came out to be the Basement Backup Protection Program Plan. And I asked for as much money as they would allow. And so far, that's $2.4 million, which is nowhere near enough to cover the 17,000 homes that we already have committed to. And so, as I've said in other public meetings, once we get started, once this program is successful, I am more than sure that elected officials, City Council members, will find additional funding for the program and will be able to expand it into other areas. But right now, the program was approved for the 11 communities that we have. And that only encompasses two City Council districts. There are seven. So there are five districts that didn't get anything. And no matter where you cut it off, there will always be people on the outside of those boundary lines. And so we haven't put the first basement, the backwater valve in yet. April 1st will be the start of the program. And nobody would like to expand that program more than I would. But it's going to be, we have the dollars allocated to do it. So let's make this program successful. Everybody wants to be a part of success. And I'm sure that it will get expanded, hopefully, to her area.
So is this something that customers should appeal to City Council?
Yes, that's where the, that's, the ARPA dollars are approved through City Council. But, you know, I just, I just caution folks that there are a lot of priorities for the ARPA dollars. And right now, most of that money's been allocated, so.
Ms. Burton, I hope you heard the response and I certainly think that the department will continue to pursue dollars that can help customers who are in need of this plan. But as you, as you heard, right now, it is not under the authority of our department, but under the authority of City Council. So I hope that answers your question. And we will continue to look for ways to help our customers when we can. Is there anyone else who's requested to speak before the board?
Yes, Madam Chair. Next, we have Miko Williams.
Mr. Williams, welcome, sir.
Hi. Greetings to this honorable body of Water Board Commissioners. Thank you all for allowing me to speak. I'm in tears from the testimony of Mr. Jermaine Payne, who was expecting the land bank to be here, and they have not shown up. This is very much a disrespect to the community and also to this commission. I would support that measure to have a special session to invite the land bank here and a message to Mr. Payne, if he's listening to me in the audience. Mr. Payne, you need to go to Bruce Simpson, the ombudsman, and make a complaint about this as you have been through the channels. And you are gonna have to confront the CEO, the Mayor of the City of Detroit, Michael Edward Duggan. My concern, I saw a social media post in regards to the vacuums of the drain, to Drain to Catch basins, that it took all sorts of bureaucracy, including a conversation with the mayor and Director Brown, just to get one truck in her neighborhood. That is very concerning. The catch basins need to be cleaned out right now, or at least by April. And they need to be cleaned out in different districts by every week. I understand there's no drivers. I understand there's problems and making sure that those trucks are out there. But that is, that is the most thing to help us combat those floods that we had from last year. I'm also going to bring attention to this board that even while you're trying to campaign for customers to come into the Water Board to pay their bills, I am requesting that the East Side and the West Side payment centers be open during the month of April and ongoing to ensure that customers have a location where they could go down to pay their bills. I'm also requesting of this Water Board to please look into expanding hours into the downtown location to accommodate people who are getting off of work. Also, those that need to talk to someone about their payment arrangements. I thank Director Brown and the Customer Service Division for accommodating citizens, also cutting down the phone times and the wait in order to talk with someone. That is very commendable. But we need to do a better job. And Hydrate Detroit continues to advocate for an incentive-based program or an incentive-based deal for Detroiters to come down and settle their situations by getting 50% off of old arrears in order to zero out the water bills. Nobody wants to be chained on the Wayne Metro. Nobody wants to be chained to these assisted programs. Create an incentive, like water amnesty, to get people out of debt so they can cash out while they get into tax payments and the child tax credits as well and other subsidies. Thank you so much for taking my comments.
Thank you very much, Mr. Williams, for taking the time to address the commission. Is there anyone else?
Yes, Madam Chair. We have caller with the last three digits of 580.
I'm sorry, didn't hear the name?
Just the last three digits of the phone number. It's 580.
Okay. Hello, 580? Could you identify yourself, please? Hello, customer? Do they need to unmute?
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now. Would you please give us your name?
Okay. Wanda Kima, and I'm the conservator of an estate that has a home at 5334 Joseph Campo. I called in in October over a $6,000 water bill, which has been reduced to 4,854. And I was told someone would call me after that meeting. About three or four weeks later, I got a call from a Ms. Walters or Waters. And she was going to get back to me to try and settle this, as I'm getting $3,000 for the house. And that's all there is. And she said it shouldn't be hard to handle, and I haven't heard you send back. And the buyer is ready to walk.
I didn't get the last sentence, but certainly we must follow, make sure we follow through on our commitment to our customers to get back to them. I don't, we don't know what happened in this case. I didn't get your last name. I got Wanda, what's the last name?
No, Linda Kama, K-A-J-M-A.
K-A-J-M-A?
Yes.
Okay, so we have your contact information. And Director Brown will have someone get back in touch with you today?
I appreciate that.
Thank you so much. We hope to get this resolved for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board at this time?
Yes, Madam Chair. We have phone number ending in 624.
Okay, could you please unmute yourself and let us know who you are, please?
Good afternoon, Commissioners and Director Brown. My name is Yvonne Johnson. And I spoke with you last month regarding the backup protection plan. I wanted to know why it was not in my area. My area is Joy Road between Liverneys and Wyoming and West Chicago. So we're right in the center of that area. And we did have flooding in the declared disaster. And we've had basement floodings frequently. So you pretty much answered the first part of the question about the backup protection plan. My second question to you last month was, is water being diverted to my area? Because maybe you're looking at income levels, or I don't know how you make the determination. But we have put in rain gardens. It has been suggested that in order to prevent flooding, that we put in backup bells and sewer, sump pumps. In this area, you have mostly seniors who are on a fixed income. And the things that you're proposing to keep us from having basement backups is quite expensive. Not only is it expensive, but just finding contractors to come into our area and not overcharge us is a problem. And then the last thing that I asked you about last month, and someone was supposed to get back with me, and that is, why aren't our drains being clean? I mentioned to you about the drains on Dover and Brighton. I was out there yesterday. I looked at the drains. They are still filled to the top with water. The Black Club sent an email online. I did an online request about the stream of water that is running down the street, but nobody's addressed it. Now, you are a credible people, and it should not be necessary for the citizens to have to go to an outside news service to shine light on what is not being done. That's not the way things should work. So I'm asking you to please address these situations. And again, my name is Yvonne Johnson. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. You're absolutely right. We do want to certainly live up to the responsibilities we have. And we don't want to make promises that we don't keep. So I don't know, Director Brown, do you wanna have any comment?
Ms. Johnson, do you have the ability to leave your contact information in the chat? So that we can have an engineer contact you either later today or early tomorrow and get your issues addressed?
Are you still there, Ms. Johnson? Did we get her information? Aren't they supposed to leave the contact information in the chat, Public Affairs?
There is a link in the chat. I will look to see if she submitted it. I have not seen a submission yet. Please.
Johnson, is that you?
Yes, it is. Can you hear me?
If you would please leave your information in the chat so we'll be able to get back in touch with you.
I'm not able to leave it in the chat because I'm talking over the phone. However, I have spoken with her at 2244704. I spoke with her a couple of times. And I thought she was in Mr. Brown's office. Is that not true?
We do have your, we do have your information. I'm sorry, the secretary is telling me we do have your information. So you will be hearing from us today.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the Commission, Board of Water Commissioners at this time?
Yes, Madam Chair. We have Philip Shane.
Didn't we speak to Mr. Shane earlier?
No, no, you spoke to Michael Shane. My name is Philip Shane.
Oh, you spoke Shane, S-H-A-N-E. Thank you, sir. I'm sorry.
Yes. Just a couple of comments and one question. First, thank you for your time and allowing me to speak. But I wanted to say that failing to take emergency measures to replace these lead service lines on Patton Street between McNichols and Grand River will likely cause further decreases in property value and subsequent revenue loss from property taxes, potential population loss, and the increase of consumers' expenses related to risk pool-priced health insurance policies. So we need to see action from the city of Detroit and the Department of Water and Sewer to address this immediately. DWSD also needs to hold Great Lakes Water Authority accountable to ensure that the water leaving their plant is treated appropriately to mitigate against lead leaching. DWSD needs to hold contractors like Major Cement accountable for the way they perform work, ensuring that the appropriate measures are taken to limit adverse impacts on the lead service lines near where work is being performed. I would also like to affirm the other residents' stated concerns with the Detroit Land Bank and their nefarious acts. And lastly, I just had a question. I often hear that financial reasons are why the Detroit Water and Sewer Department isn't taking, you know, greater steps to actively replace all of the waters, lead service lines across the city. It's often chalked up to, we don't have the money. But I would like to ask you, if you did have the money, is there a plan in place to immediately start taking action and addressing this? And then also, does the Department of Water and Sewer have data or research on how water shut-offs affect lead service lines and potentially increase the chance of long-term lead leaching into the water even after the water service is restored? Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Shane, Mr. Director.
Ms. Madam Chair, as you know, we have approximately 80,000 lead service lines in the city of Detroit. It's going to be difficult to make everybody the first person to have their line removed. It is a matter of cost. It would be $60 million a year in order to just get this done in 20 years. And so we have lobbied the federal government, the state, for dollars to be able to. And so we have lobbied the federal government, the state, for dollars to be able to remove lead service lines. We have been removing them the last four to five years with the dollars that we had available. But we cannot raise rates to the degree um it would be, it would make water unaffordable for most in this city in order to do $60 million worth of lines a year. I am cautiously optimistic that the Bidens buy infrastructure uh bill will get money into the city of Detroit to go fast. But right now, it it's a matter of cost. And um, we're removing the lines that we have the dollars for. Um, and as soon as the dollars show up from the federal government through the state to us, we have a program ready to go to accelerate the removal of lead service lines. The inference that Great Lakes Water Authority's uh water even comes into contact with lead is just is just wrong. But the water, the water is coming into contact either at the service line or inside the person's home. And so it is also just as important to make sure that there's no lead within the home. Because once we remove the line, if it's going into the home and there are fixtures that have lead or lead solder or it's coming in contact, uh, you're still gonna have a problem, and that's the homeowner's responsibility. So um, that's where we are. Uh, well, as soon as the money shows up, I'll be bringing contracts to this body. Um, depending on the contractor capacity in the city to be able to to go that go faster is going to be another issue uh that has to be dealt with, building contractor capacity. We're working on training programs and building that capacity now so that when the money shows up, we can go fast.
Um, Director Brown, this this continues to to be, I think, an area that customers are not fully informed about. I don't know how we get the message out more clearly. We've got to continue to try to find a way to do that because I I think that most much of the misunderstanding about it is because people, customers just don't understand. First of all, what has to be done, and then the cost associated with it, and who would bear that cost? So we have to continue to try to 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 take that message out and pound, make sure that our customers uh have a greater appreciation for how much we're trying to do and how much little, how little money we have. And what we've been doing, I think, is we've been collaborating with other, as other work is done. That's when we've been replacing uh lead service lines when when it is financially manageable for us, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to address uh the commission at this time?
Madam Chair, no additional hands are raised at this time. If you would like to speak during public comment, please raise your hand. No hands are raised around. I believe we have concluded public comment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So that concludes public comment, and we'll move on now to communications.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Commissioner, yes, you want to make a comment?
All of our customers to comment. Um, I think Director and Director Brown and I had a comment maybe a month or two ago in reference to vacuuming drains and and Director Brown, I think you mentioned to me back then because of the temperature, it's very difficult to put those trucks out on the street to uh to clean those out. And when the weather changed, we would we would get back going on this. So I just wanted to make that comment.
And do you want to comment further on that, Director?
Uh, um, yes, it it is more than just a vacuum that sucks out any debris that's in the drain. You need water in the truck to be able to uh clean out any tree roots or anything that may be blocking. And so we're ramping up right now to get every piece of equipment that we have available. We're training personnel so that we can have that equipment on the street. And I committed to City Council, and I'll I'll make sure that I get the board a copy of a plan that will show every district a schedule of routine maintenance on the service drains month by month, where where the trucks will be, what districts they will be in. And uh, and so that we can post that on our website and people can can actually see the date and time in which uh their neighborhood should receive that service.
And of course, we as we as customers should make sure we keep that drain open from our from our end. To keep it clear of debris. Is there anything else uh that you'd like to comment on it about that Commissioner? Commissioner Coleman, was that it? Was that satisfactory? Okay, thank you. If there are no other items, um, public comment is closed, and we're moving on now to, again, Communications Item A two two dash zero seven five nine, receipt of correspondence. We have uh, we entertain a motion to receive the FOI request, Commissioner Forte.
Uh, yes, um, I move receipt file.
And probably moved to receipt a file. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by the sign of I.
I.
Opposed nay, motion carried. The next item is two dash two two dash zero seven six zero. It's also receipt of correspondence.
Madam Chair.
I'm, I move that we receive and file a correspondence.
Support.
Probably moved and supported any discussion? Hearing none?
Uh, yes.
Oh, you do have a, okay, I'm sorry, Commissioner Kenlock.
Okay, I'm looking at those claims, and it seems like all of those were denied. Um, are are the ones that are approved under 50,000, are those also included? Or is this just the, I guess, that this group of claim for just all deny denials?
Um, Madam Chair.
Yes, please.
I've got the entire list. This is Nokia branch. That's the entire list.
That's the entire list?
Yes.
So are they, were there any ever, I mean, were they, I'm just saying, is that this group?
Were any approved? Is that your question?
I'm sorry, do we also get the notice as it relates to those that's approved?
Madam Chair, yes.
Okay. Wow.
If there's no further discussion, all those in favor of approving this item signify by a sign of I.
I. I.
Thank you. Motion carried. Next item is items from Commissioners. Uh, so I, the, um, I don't know why that says that. Anyway, item nine is approval of the consent agenda. Chair will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, move to approve the consent agenda items.
Did I, was that you first, Commissioner Kenlock? I thought, did you say something, Chairman Einhauser?
Uh, no, but be happy to support the motion.
Okay. And probably moved and supported that we approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? I would just echo what Commissioner, uh, with the with the chair always says that these items came before the committees. They were thoroughly discussed under committees, so there's no need to have additional dialogue unless someone from the public has a question, and then we have to go back to public comment. So we are to do that. If there are no further discussion, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda and items, items nine, A through G, please indicate by the sign of I.
I.
Opposed nay, motion carried. So the next item is new business, item A two two dash zero seven five seven. Chair would entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Forte.
I move that the Board of Water Commissioners for the city of Detroit Water and Sewer Department approves the proposed two-year operating budgets for fiscal years 2022 dash 23 and 2023 dash 24 for the Water Operating Fund in the amount of 140,733,600 and 145,684,300 respectively. And for the Sewer Disposal Operating Fund in the amount of 350,405,300 and 366,770,800 respectively.
Their support? Is there anyone going to this to address this item today, Commissioner, the Director Brown?
Um, which item, Madam Chair?
This is the approval of the two-year operating budget for federal for fiscal years. Item twenty-two dash zero seven five seven.
Istikar. I, is Istikar available? I know that I can.
They came before finance.
Yes, it came, it came before finance. It also uh, we walked the Detroit City Council through the complete budget hearing uh that we gave to this body um, at at the last meeting uh today. Um, we also uh assured them that we will be back in front of City Council once we were coming back with rates because this is just the budget and rates are not a part of the budget that comes later in May. Um, but we didn't intend to give another presentation on the budget unless there are questions or concerns that uh the Commissioners have.
I would just like to say that, you know, when you're talking about this kind of this amount, that it doesn't have to have a presentation, but some commentation commentary from staff might be helpful at the public meeting. It doesn't have to be, you know.
Yeah, Istikar available.
Yeah, I, I'm here.
Yeah, he can, he can give you commentary.
There's a brief overview, Istikar. We had, we had the meeting at finance, but in terms of the of the public hearing about this item.
Okay, um, I like a quick presentation of the of the budget amount. Michelle, if you could put on the presentation that I emailed you. Quickly go through this, these numbers here. Yeah, so this presentation was made to uh to our Finance Committee on March 2nd. Just a brief highlight for the members of our Commission, Board of Water Commissioners, who are probably not there. Last year, we had engaged a an outside consulting firm called Stan Tech to do a cost of service analysis of our of our costs between water and sewer divisions. Uh, the result of that of that cost of service analysis uh is out, and we've incorporated those results into current budget. What transpired as a result of that is shifting of costs, a reallocation of costs from the sewer fund to the water fund. Again, based on the study, approximately $12 million of direct expenses uh were moved from uh sewer fund to the water fund. In total, very minimal difference in terms of the total cost. But you will see a big jump in in the water fund and an equally big decrease in the sewer fund.
Your voice is fading just a little bit.
Oh. So, okay, now?
Yeah, if you could speak directly into your microphone, that would be helpful.
Okay, thank you. So this resulted, as I mentioned, some shifting of costs between water and sewer. Uh, overall, overall cost increases $3.2 million uh when we compare to our current current year forecast, which represents about 0.7% increase. If you take it on a, on a total system-wide basis, which would include the water fund and the sewer fund. The other highlight, as I keep mentioning, is is our concern over residential collection rates. Those rates have dropped significantly from over 90% uh pre-pandemic to less than 75% now. As a result of that decrease and and negative collection trend, we had to increase our budget bad debt expense projection. Uh, it's over $5 million of our current year forecast and approximately $7 million over the FY22 budget. The FY23 budget also includes 44 new positions that we deem necessary to support our strategic initiatives and operations. We also highlight the uh the starting of a lead service replacement program. And uh, in our plan is is a transition of our capital program from ACOM to field engineering, trying to bring it in-house. On the next slide, uh, very high level, uh, you know. Yes, this, next slide is, yeah. So this is the impact of the reallocation of the cost that we talked about because of cost of service analysis. And here you can see on a total revenue requirement basis, which is the system-wide cost, including water and sewer, we have a 0.7% increase when we compare our proposed FY23 budget over our FY22 forecast. On a net revenue basis, it's slightly higher because we incorporate shared services as well as GLWA share of legacy. Shared services revenue have gone down a little bit. This this is because of, uh, you know, discontinuing our WAM licensing program. And at the bottom of it is the rate revenue requirement, which is a slight increase of 0.8% or about $3.7 million. Next three slides, actually. They go to next slide. Yeah, this is the overall structure of our cost. Go back, go back, please. One more. All right, so this is the how we determine our net revenue requirement. There are three components that make up our net requirements or projected annual expenses. Uh, one is our, obviously, our operating and maintenance expense. This is an O and M budget. The second component is wholesale charges and our wrap contribution. And the third part is the capital uh cost. You'll see here the bigger increases in the net operating and maintenance expenses, and I'll explain it in the next slide. Wholesale charges increased again, $7 million. It's about 1.3 in our debt and net debt and capital, which is composed of our capital costs and our net uh revenue finance capital that shows a decrease of 13.7. So overall, an increase of $4.81 million uh year over year. The next slide would be the net operating and maintenance expenses, and I'm just gonna touch on the larger variances here. Uh, you look at salaries and wages, expenses have increased slightly. And again, due to the addition of 44 new FTEs that we contemplate using in our operations in FY23. Contractual services shows a little bit of an increase mainly due to budgetary savings, which is reflected in our forecast for FY22. Uh, we expect normal expenditure in FY23. In FY23, we also included in our budget a million dollars in the sewer for sewer uh based on a recent flooding event. Bad debt is again a reflection of our current trend in collection, and it continues to increase as collection keeps going down. Next slide would be the second component of our cost structure, which is wholesale charges. And this is a cost that we have very little control over. Uh, this is an estimate or a budget uh determination by GLWA. For the water fund, it has increased 3%. And for the sewer fund, uh, it's a 1% increase compared to prior year. And then these increases are incorporated in our revenue requirement for FY23. The next slide is the last component of the cost structure, which is capital. The first two lines you'll see is constant. The first line is the bond debt service, which is a debt service on our, the money we borrowed. Uh, and it remains constant for, at least for the foreseeable future. Uh, legacy cost is again the similar amount from last year. The only number that changed is the revenue finance capital, and that's driven by whatever is happening to our operating expenses and revenue. So, as we.
Thank you. Mr. Brown?
Yeah, I, you know, just to sum it up, what Istikar just said, I mean, we've got a $440 million proposed budget for next year. It's only increasing by point zero seven. Now, when you take into consideration inflation in this country, in some states is 10 to 12%, 7 to 8% here in Michigan, our budget is only increasing point zero seven percent. And we're adding 44 new positions, 25 of them for field service to be able to to man those vector trucks and things of that nature. Another six of them of those FTEs will go to procurement because we're expecting uh a windfall of dollars uh from the federal government, and we know that we'll have to get contracts out to to get that that money up and and running uh another uh six positions, I believe, for the finance team so that they also can build uh the resources that they're gonna need to monitor all of the new projects that are coming in. So um, the the big highlight is the bad debt and how we're gonna deal with that going forward. Uh, in this proposed budget, we were able to hold the line. Um, I think one of the things that I addressed to City Council because it was in the media that GLEWA was passing a three and a half percent wholesale rate to suburban customers. That does not affect us.
Yes.
When one suburban community does not pay its bills, the other suburban suburban communities have to make up that bad debt.
Yes.
But Detroit is a not. But Detroit is not a part of the suburban class. That's the good news. The bad news is when we don't collect thirty-eight million dollars in bad debt, the suburbs don't share in that, that either. So, um, but it was misleading that we were being, being given a, a three point six four percent wholesale rate from Great Lakes Water Authority. That was not true.
It was confusing.
That's what the suburban class received on average. Uh, we got much less than that because we don't have to pick up Highland Park's bad debt. So, that, that, that's a summary of it and certainly, yeah, we'll, we'll be, we'll be coming back to the board with, uh, rates in, uh, April, May-ish. And that, uh, that will support funding this proposed budget.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, and Gary, I'd just like to add, as you mentioned here, uh, commissioners, the, the budget's pretty cost neutral. We are holding the line flat in, in spite of some increases in certain costs. But you'll see them, you know, practically all of the increases owe to the bad debt estimation increase. And it's all because of our, you know, our, uh, current trend in collection.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Coleman?
Um, just a point of clarification. I noticed.
Are you speaking directly into your microphone?
Just a point of clarification, excuse me. Miss Madam Chair, I noticed we, we use the terms budget and forecast. I'm assuming the forecast is a, an estimate of how we're gonna finish up at the end of the year?
Right.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we just wanted to brief overview for the public to under, to have a better understanding of what we were talking about. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you for the opportunity.
So we've had the, um, discussion. All those in favor of approving this item, indicate by the sign of I.
I.
Oh, what, did I do wrong? Oh, I'm sorry, it's a roll call. It's rates. Oh, you wanna call the roll?
It's the budget.
I mean, so, okay, but it's, it's money. It's a budget, okay.
Chairman Einhauser?
Chairman Einhauser? Okay, good. He'll come back, I'm sure.
Vice Chair Blackman?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Forte?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Kenlock?
Yes.
Commissioner Einhauser votes yes.
Thank you very much, motion carries. Oh, I should have asked, are there, you know, we had a, uh, it can, uh, can, a complete agreement by the board. The next item then is the director's metrics, Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Miss, uh, Madam Chair, and I, and I'll, I'll be brief. Um, in, in front of, I was in front of the city council, as I indicated earlier today. And I, I committed to them that I would come back after, uh, I had approved a, a public relations strategy to, uh, do a better job of reaching out to our low-income customers. And, uh, I'm committing that the strategy will, um, find ways in which to, to involve contractually some of the water advocates, uh, that, um, have the ability to reach, uh, customers that we haven't been able to reach. Um, I'd like to work with the churches, uh, nonprofits and others, uh, to reach that group of, uh, of customers that don't really pay a lot of attention to mainstream media, to the, to the news or the, or the, the newspapers. Uh, we've gotta go door-to-door and find people because, um, we've got more money than we've ever had uh, to assist people, but we need them to help us, assist them by applying for the dollars. And so we've gotta get this message out. We haven't done a really good job of that. When you're sitting on more than ten million dollars in which to help people and that you're, you're, you're trying to, to give away, so to speak, or, or at least pay, pay down their balances, uh, that should be an easy thing to do. Uh, but we're not doing a good job of it now and, and we're committing to doing that. Uh, with that said, let me, I, I just wanna publicly, uh, everybody, well, most everybody in this room knows about the RAP program and the dollars that are available there. Uh, but there are four other programs, uh, the COVID Emergency Rental Assistance Program in which there's up to a hundred and fif- fifteen hundred to twenty-five hundred dollars for households to pay utilities as well as rental assistance. There's the Low Income Household Water Assistance Program, LIWAP. Uh, that's where we got the ten million dollars from, and that will pay up to six hundred and fifty dollars per household. Then there's the State Emergency Relief Fund, SER, SER, which will pay up to three hundred and fifty dollars per household. And then finally, uh, this is a new program, the Michigan Homeowners Assistance Program. It pays a household up to twenty-five thousand dollars. And what's unique about this program is you can have two wage earners making as much as ninety-six thousand dollars a year and qualify for twenty-five thousand dollars in assistance for mortgages. And most importantly, as everybody in this room knows, um, mortgages are difficult to come by in the city of Detroit. Most of the property changes hands, changes hands through a land contract. A, a private deal, if you will. Well, this program will, um, give up to twenty-five thousand dollars to homeowners for land contracts. I've never seen a, a governmental program that dealt with a land contract, normally a traditional mortgage, but a land contract. And it also pays all utilities, gas, lights and water. And so there is an amount of money that is in the system right now to be able to, uh, help people pay their bills. And of course, when, when, when we're bleeding thirty-eight million dollars and this money's available, our, our customers need to apply for the money so that it can be, can pay the bill down and then hit our bottom line. If they don't apply for it and receive it, it, it doesn't hit our bottom line. So we, we've gotta do a much better job and I'm, I'm committing to come before this board with a, a plan and a strategy that literally goes door-to-door in some unconventional, uh, groups that we haven't used in the past. We're gonna be, uh, reaching out to them to see if we can get them under contract. And, uh, Madam Chair, I, I think the first thing that we'll do is we'll bring them in and, and have a brainstorming session once we get them under contract and then we'll, we'll, we'll be out in the community trying to uh, make people aware of these programs so that, uh, you know, the dollars reach our bottom line, which is what, what our goal is. Thank you, Madam Chair.
When will this be presented to customer service?
Well, we, we should have it, uh, by mid-April, no, later, um, because we're, we're, we're gonna be ready to go. So thirty days or so, we should be.
This is, this is an excellent program. I, and I don't, I, I would venture to say that most people don't know anything about it.
I, I venture to say you're right.
Okay.
And they're not, you're, you're not gonna reach them through commercials on television.
No, no. Um, or even on a website, so.
No.
Um, okay, uh, yeah, is there a question? I saw, I heard something?
I'm sorry, those are some great programs. Do you have those in PDF? I would love to, um, I'm doing mailers, uh, newsletters. I would love to include those in, as part of the newsletter.
We, we will give you a PDF and we can also give you as many flyers as you'd like to take with you.
Yes, okay, thank you.
I, I, I just like, I mean, the programs are also available to Wayne County. I mean, uh.
Yeah, for, yes, mm-hmm. Yeah, we, uh, we also just found out that, uh, from the ARPA money that we can actually use it for Detroit residents. That's the new reg that came from treasury. Generally, money that comes into the county, Detroit's excluded because Detroit gets its own pot of money, um, which some are like, why we exist, why are we over there, right?
No, nobody asked that.
Yeah.
Okay, that's, um, thank you, Director Brown, it's excellent, uh, excellent presentation on, on that for our customers. Next item is items from commissioners, comments from commissioners. Do we have any? Yes, Commissioner Kenlock and then Commissioner Coleman.
Commissioner Coleman now.
And, and I, I guess the first is a question. Um, Director Brown, the procurement, um, portal, do we use the Oracle program here at, uh, DWSD, the same one the city uses?
Uh, we, we use, I believe my deal, is Dan, Dan on from, um, IT?
Dan Rainey?
Yeah.
I am, yes.
Uh, uh, Dan, Commissioner Coleman, just curious, the, uh, the, the program that the city uses for procurement and looking at RFPs, is it the same one, um, that DWSD uses?
It's a slightly different, um. The, um, preference for a city-based business is a bit more weighted in the city RFPs.
Well, well, my comment was, I've, uh, last week or two, I've been looking at their portal and it is extremely challenging to navigate. And that could have something to do with maybe why more people don't respond. Um, I've, I've shared my comments with, um, the folks at the city. And at first, I thought it was me, but I do some work with, uh, some professionals from Cisco and they say, yes, it, it, it is. So, my, my comment, A, if we ever decide to upgrade that system, I would highly recommend have some non-technical folks. And, and what I mean by that is folks that look at RFPs, because you should be able to look at it, respond to it, navigate it and not need a manual to do it. And so I've looked at it several different times and I've had to call. And, 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 and I told the young lady, I'm embarrassed to bug you, but I, this is just, it just, the workflow is just not normal. So that's just my comment.
Okay, great comment. Thank you very much for that. Dan, you heard him, right?
I did, yes, ma'am.
Hey, very good.
And Dan, I'm gonna call you because I, I need a manual to get through it. I'm serious. If you could email me something.
Okay. Did I see some other, uh, comments, Mr. Kenlock? Yes, thank you.
Uh, yes, um, just that, like to mention that it's, uh, uh, during a meeting, submit, send a que, email over to the director and there was some, um, questions regarding the easement, um, uh, at nineteen oh five, uh, nineteen oh five fifteen Vandite, uh, some questions that I got from, I, I was at a community meeting regarding that easement and the, um, OMIA, um, and that whole, um, issue there, as well as like to mention that, um, for over a year, this, um, there's been a water, uh, lake, water leakage, at least coming out of a vacant property. Uh, it's been a slow leak, but it's obviously is a home that was demolished. And it is located at ten, I mean, it's located across the street, not at this address, but directly across the street, vacant lot. Uh, you'll see a slow, a, a, a slow, um, leakage coming out of the ground at this demolished, uh, uh, property at one, uh, across from, across from one zero five five, uh, Anin, A-N-N-I-N, that's like right off of Woodward. Uh, just north of, of, of Seven Mile. I'm, know I'm mispronouncing him, Anin or Anin?
I'm, I'm, I'm almost, I'm almost sure it's been addressed. I, I recognize the, uh, the Anin Street.
Yeah, very.
But I, I will, I will verify that.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
I mean, in that, that, I mean, that's a question, if we ever get the land bank here. If you're not disconnecting the line from the main and you're just crimping, you're just folding it back. It's a service line that's going to leak. It may take several years, but that's not the correct way for a demo to disconnect the line. It should be disconnected from the water main, not from folding back and crimping it. It, it's, it's, when you do thousands of them.
Yeah, that adds up and.
We end up back out there trying to dig it up and, and make the correct, so we, we, we wanna ask the land bank, why is that? What, why is it being done that way?
Absolutely.
Something else, Commissioner?
Uh, no, that was it, thank you.
Did you do a C-click fix on that one? I've done that.
I, I might be able to get you an answer before we leave because I, I'm almost sure that's been in my office. I heard it.
Okay, thank you.
Very, very great. Okay, um, any other comments, my commissioners? I have a couple. Um, first of all, this is not only women his, Women's History Month, it is, it's Reading Month. So if anyone wants to go to a school and read to children, I'm sure they'd love to have you. You could contact, uh, the school and they would love to have a commissioner come out. Uh, and also I wanted to give congratulations to Attorney Posh Peachon. She's a new grandmother. And, uh, it's a wonderful thing, yes. The, the child, it, it, it's a boy. He, he has, he has been born. He's a boy. So we want to offer our congratulations to her. Yes, absolutely.
Madam, Madam Chair, she's, she's also being honored by Crane Magazine for, um, I'm not sure if it's Lawyer of the Year, what the title is, but I, I just saw a blurb come in. I haven't had a chance to read the article, but she's being honored by Crane Magazine.
Well, let us offer our congratulations on her honor by Crane Magazine. We don't know the exact title, we wanna.
It's well deserved, but.
Absolutely, well deserved. Absolutely.
Great attorney.
Any other comments, my commissioners? Um, Mr. Chair, do you wanna have something to say?
Uh, no, thank you. I, uh.
You're welcome.
Yeah, it was a good meeting. Somebody knows how to run a good type meeting.
Yeah, yeah, sure. Okay. If there are no other matters to come before the board, then the chair will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Oh, move, Madam Chair.
Moved and properly supported.
For.
Meeting stands adjourned.